Good evening and welcome to the September 5th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll be calling the meeting to order and also ask everyone to please silence their cell phones. I'll introduce the board at this time. On my far left, or I'm sorry, my far right, your far left is James Morse, who is an associate member of the board, followed by Ken Foreman, who is our vice chairman. My name is T.J. Hury and I'm the chairman of the board. To my left is Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, followed by Bob Dugan, who is our clerk, and Mary Berry, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary for them tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that we make are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to and from the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and then time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then ask questions to the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Any public comments should be directed only at the project and we also ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. But public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it just might be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chairman and should come to the podium to the right here. We also ask you to please state your name and address for the record. Typically, we limit public comment to two minutes per person. We will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. As for any board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. Such a motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, is a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. And turning into our agenda for tonight, we have public comment followed by a continuation and we also have five new hearings and open meeting agenda items. So the public comment that starts off is different from the public comment during any application hearings. This public comment right now is for things that are not on our agenda tonight. So is there anyone in the public that wishes to make any comment at this time? Sir?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Joseph Bento. I represent the Locust Field Mears Pond Association in reference to the 40B construction at Locust Field Road. You have slight remembrance of that probably after the seven or eight months that we've gone through with it. I have a simple question. You gentlemen at the end came up with 45 definitions of things that have to be done according to what Mr. McCrone had to do. The question is this: If these issues are not carried out correctly or properly, who enforces it? Who do I go see, or who does the Locust Field Mears Pond Association go see to find out how we can correct this? Examples, you had stipulated, and unfortunately I don't have the numbers in front of me and the definitions, that there should have been a police escort at the site with vehicles coming in and out. There has not been. The man has completely cleared the land. Secondly, there should be, let me get my brain together here, there, well, that's the biggest thing. The second thing is that, again, we don't know who to go to to find, to get affirmation as to what, if he's doing something that's wrong or we feel it's not appropriate, who do we go to to see? You guys make the rules, but who enforces them? And that's my question. Who does that? Who dare do there, what dare?
Thank you for coming tonight. With regard to that project, it's the subject of litigation right now and as...
I know, we appealed it.
I know. As a policy, the board can't make any comment.
You cannot tell me that if something is not proper, you made the decisions.
I can tell, I can tell you hypothetically.
Fine. Shoot it off the wall, please.
I'll shoot it right up there.
Okay.
So just to be clear, we can't make any comment regarding anything that's currently under litigation that we're a party to. However, if you do have any, generally speaking, hypothetically, if you have any concerns about any conditions of any project, you would contact the office.
What office?
The ZBA office. And that's, and that's with...
And we've been to the engineering, we've been to the ZBA, we've been told to go to the engineering and the engineers ought to go to the building department. So what do we do, gentlemen? I know you, gentlemen, you do what you best you can, but the fact of the matter is, is that there's issues that's going on and we're being run around. And all we need is a straight answer. Your major rules, your major regulations, how do you enforce them? Who do I go see to see that they're enforced?
You know, typically speaking, with any appeal or anything like that, that we would grant positive findings with findings and conditions, the...
I'm sorry, say that again now?
Normally speaking, the answer is going to the ZBA office and asking...
Okay.
About that.
All right.
Also, within the building department, there, there should be someone responsible for enforcement there.
So we got ZBA and I got the building department. That's what you're sending me to, us to?
I'm not sending you anywhere.
The Locust Field Road Mears Pond Association. That's where you're sending us to?
Just a hypothetical.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically speaking.
Hypothetically, we can expect 12 houses built over here with nothing being followed.
The man went in and cleared the land, which is fine, that's his right and his rule to do it. Last rainstorm we had on my property, it got flooded with water. He never put any bales of hay up on the sides of the property to stop that. Where do I go? Who do I go see to do this? Now, we got another storm coming Friday and I'm going to get even twice as much water on my property. Who do I go, where do I go to get this resolved? I can't fight the man, he won the battle. Very good legal representation. He won the battle, but where do I go to get these basic issues taken care of?
I think we can follow up with engineering for you and if, see if we can get that straightened out as to who's going to follow up on that.
Okay, Noreen. I will see you, Noreen. I will see you.
Please do.
Okay, thank you very much.
See that you're taken care of.
You are a good woman. Thank you. And gentlemen, thank you for my, your time and my frustration. All righty, thank you.
Welcome. As for any other public comment, does anyone else have anything they'd like to discuss that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, move on to our continuation, application 26-19.
So I'd like to make a motion to take a open meeting item out of order.
Oh, sure.
So, open meeting item number four, which is board administrative review for determination of insubstantial change, 591 Gifford Street, Falmouth, number 79-18, Falmouth Housing Corporation.
Motion to take that out of order, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll take number four out of order. And this is regarding the insubstantial change for 591 Gifford Street. It's application 79-18, Falmouth Housing Corporation.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and thank you for the motion to take this out of order. We'll try to be very quick. This is a comprehensive permit and under the 40B regulations, as often occurs when you get to the construction and financing stage of these projects, you have various entities, DHTD, MHP, sometimes the county involved, and they're looking for modifications to the permit or the construction plans for building permits dictate some minor changes to the floor plans. So this application is to simply request that the project site be divided into two lots. Each lot would contain two buildings. The lot area won't change, the frontage won't change for the main, for the overall lot area, but the purpose of that is for financing reasons. So the first two buildings can be financed with an institutional lender through construction financing and then after the construction is done, that loan can be refinanced through MHP, but it means putting the mortgage security on only one parcel as opposed to two. So it's just a way to facilitate the financing for the project. The other issue is that the applicant has asked to have the signs and the sign plans approved prior to issuance of occupancy permits rather than building permits. That's just really a practical thing where with these developments, it really is more helpful to have the buildings up and know where the signs should go when you can get out on the ground and review the site and have better sighting for the signage. So, you know, that, that's user signage, so it shouldn't, we're hoping that it shouldn't be an issue for you to just have that done before the occupancy of the buildings as opposed to before the building permits. And then the other change are minor construction plan changes. The architects filed for you a list of these. If you'd like me to go through them, I can, they, they are in your file and that's, I guess, your pleasure, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to read that list.
All right. It was forwarded to us, I'm sorry.
Okay, fine. So those changes in the architect's memorandums again are for construction plan changes in order to secure the building permit based on these fine tuning of the plans. The comprehensive permit technically needs to be modified. So under the 40B regulations, if you deem these requests insubstantial changes, then you can approve them administratively under the regulations and typically, Noreen prepares a decision and it's filed with the town clerk and then we'll have all the lawyers in Boston will be very happy. That's the request. Thank you.
And the revised list of waivers, that was dated September, September 5th?
Yes.
The one that you referenced?
Thank you, yes. So because of the lots, the, the main parcel being divided, that dictates then that there would be, from, from a technical point of view, the waivers would have to be revised as well. With the comprehensive permit, the board had granted waivers for frontage, lot area, and lot width, and lot coverage. So now, and those waivers apply to the entire parcel, which was just over an acre. So now we have to just revise, revise those waivers to apply to each of what is proposed as lot 5A and lot 5B. So that's more of a technical thing so that if the board is inclined to approve this modification, that those waivers can be referenced in the decision as having been modified as well to apply to the two new lots.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. Any questions for Attorney Moynihan?
No.
No questions.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion?
So first, I make a motion to take a vote finding that the proposed changes are insubstantial.
Second.
Motion to find them insubstantial was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then a motion to approve the changes as proposed in the August 27, 2019 letter from Laura M. Moynihan, including the July 31, 2019 letter from Davis Square Architects, revised plans by Holmes &amp; Garth Inc., revision dated August 2, 2019, and the revised list of waivers dated September 5, 2019, based on the following findings: Dividing the lot into two lots for financing is reasonable and will not affect the comprehensive permit that was voted. Makes logical sense to evaluate signage prior to occupancy instead of prior to a building permit so that signs are appropriate for the site. Final plan with signage shall be submitted to the ZBA. Architectural changes to Building A and B as provided in the July 31, 2019 letter from Davis Square Architects are minor in nature and will enhance the look of the facade of the building.
Well said, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that takes care of agenda item number four. You're welcome. Going back to our continuation, we have application 26-19, Caccadorian Ballas, 5 Canopisit Drive and East Falmouth. And do we have anyone here for the applicant tonight?
No, we have a letter.
So there's a, they requested a continuation. So the application, the applicant's Michael Caccadorian and Stephen Ballas, care Brian J. Wall, Esquire 90 Route 6A, Sandwich, Mass. hereby agree to an extension of the hearing for 5 Canopisit Drive, East Falmouth, Mass. Requesting an appeal of the decision of the building commissioner, which was filed with the town clerk on April 29, 2019, scheduled to open on June 13, 2019, and continue to August 1, 2019, and September 5, 2019. By letter dated September 4, 2019, Brian J. Wall requested that the board further continue the opening of the hearing to October 17, 2019. So I'd make a motion to continue the hearing to October 17, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brings us to new hearings. We have application 52-19, Cape Cod Aggregate Corp., Dimmick Ave. and Draper Road in East Falmouth.
Good evening, my name's John Doyle for the record.
Mr. Doyle, we just need to read it into the record before you can start.
Okay, go ahead.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts general laws, you hereby notify that Cape Cod Aggregates Corp., Barnstable, Mass. is applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-150 through 240-156 and 240-212 of the Code of Falmouth to continue the earth-moving operation and reclamation of land on properties located on Dimmick Ave. and Draper Road, East Falmouth, Mass. MAP 22, Section 1, Parcel 8A, Lots 14. MAP 23, Section 3, Parcel 14A, Lots 13. MAP 23, Section 3, Parcel 14B, Lots 15. And MAP 23, Section 3, Parcel 14C, Lot 17. For referrals. No comment from Health Assessor's, no comment. Planning, no comment. There was a memo submitted to the file today from the Falmouth Conservation Commission from Marcus Speerzik, Conservation Land Manager, MES Technician, regarding off Blacksmith Shop Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Application number 52-19. On 9/20/2016, a referral stated at the west end of Lot 13, MAP 23, 3, 14A, 13, has wetlands and that we would like to discuss future plans. We would like to recommend an onsite visit with conservation staff, the engineer, Mr. John Doyle, and Mr. Paul LaRusso to review proposed and future activities and also to review the wildlife corridor and adjacent town property line locations. And there is one letter of concern and one letter of support.
Mr. Doyle?
Again, John Doyle for the record. I'm just going to go ahead with what we were going to present to you and we'll have to deal with this, this referral, I feel, or we feel, kind of blindsided by this. It came today, I guess, and we're here ready to go. So we did review this when we got the original permit and marked out all the deer trails and that was, and I guess we got to take a walk again. But I think quite a few of you were out there at the site visit on the 24th, I believe it was, on a Saturday. Four of you I recognize were there, I don't know about others, but this, this is, we're applying to renew an earth-moving special permit, which is required every three years if you're earth-moving because that's the way it's written in the zoning bylaw. I give you a quantity removed each year from the gravel pit. However, every three years, we actually have to renew the permit, which is only valid for three years. So this is a third year. The first year of this special permit was 1989, so it's 30 years we've been dealing with this pit. The pit is off Blacksmith Shop Road. It's hard to describe it being on a, not on a road, but it's north of Falmouth High School, west of Blacksmith Shop and abuts the, the back of the industrial park and the old landfill. The property that is under the special permit is about 60 acres. There's probably 25 of it. I haven't been asked that question in a long time, but around 25 of those acres are set aside for deer corridors, wetlands, such as that. Required buffers under the bylaw, such as 50 feet along the perimeter and the bulk of the land here set aside is out in where we discovered the whitetail deer crossings and the wetland. If you look at this, can't carry this with me, but if you look at this map here, and this is generally the 60 years we're keeping of, this dark green around, the ribbon around the perimeter is required under the zoning bylaw. And then this is the area out here that we reserve for the wetland, which is out here in the line, this would be the eastilly line of the sewage plant out here. We're not, we're not anywhere near it yet, but I guess they want to talk about when we get there. I don't know if I'll be here when we get there. But this, this gray haul road you can see comes from the plant out front of Thomas Land Reserve. Comes over some town land, which the town's given the easement board. Comes through a 19-acre piece of property that Cape Cod Aggregates also owns. That was mined for many years as well. I think that I staked that out. Uncle Paul LaRusso in the early 70s and that's been mined and we access through there. The lighter green are areas that are under the special, these here since we proceeded from this end, there are these green, lighter green areas that areas that were already mined and have been revegetated under the mitigation practices. And it looks pretty good. It's pretty thick growth in there and trees have filled in the well, even over in here where it doesn't get the lizment across sunlight of the other areas. These are areas that we have not gone to get this lighter green that are approved under the special permit. The way the permit lays it out is to do it in 60,000 square foot cells or thereabouts. This, the lighter, the tan areas we were currently working, and this area right here, the darker brown is an area we just cleared about a year ago, but now we're taking the loam off and some of the boulders off the top. At least when I concluded my serving in this first half of August, it wasn't being mined yet. They might be digging into this bit now. That's the way it lays out. I think people that are out there will recognize, we came up into this area and stopped, got out, looked around the pit here and we stopped down low to look at the mitigation of the slopes here. As I say, I'm, I'm here really at this point to answer any questions you might have, but this has been going on for the 30 years I've been dealing with it and I'm, I'm, like I said, blindsided by this referral coming in today. We were hoping to get this done tonight and, you know, there's people that are employed out there who would like to keep working. Sam LaRusso is here with me and his son, Paul, and we, any of us would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. We'll see if the board has any questions. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Bob?
No, just to confirm, there was one letter in the file that had concerns. It's a Loretta O'Brien. What's the, what's the distance of the buffer at her property?
Loretta was there at the origin in 89 and she has a house over here, she remain here, and she requested a heavier buffer. We went up 200 feet from her, instead of the 50 that we were. Her letter also states that she bought the house before this special permit was issued. But if you look at, I went back and looked at the, the notes from the original meeting in 1989, and that shows that it states from the board that this was an expansion from the operation that was in effect, the 19-acre parcel, which was in effect at least 20 years before she bought it. Adjacent to that, there's another pit, Lawrence Lynch, that was in operation for many, many years before she was here. She was saying also that she thought this thing was going to only last 15 years and there was, I looked through all the notes of those first three renewals and the original one, and there's no comment to that effect. And I think that when you go back every three years and you see that you've only gone through one cell, you can't expect that it's going to last 15 years. I mean, it's implicit that it's going to be many, many years.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
Ed? No comment, no question.
Ken? Okay.
Building Commissioner, which was filed with the town clerk on April 29th, 2019, scheduled to open on June 13th, 2019, and continue to August 1st, 2019, and September 5th, 2019. By letter dated September 4th, 2019, Brian J. Wall requested that the board further continue the opening of the hearing to October 17th, 2019. So I'd make a motion to continue the hearing to October 17th of 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Brings us to new hearings. We have Application 52-19, Cape Cod Aggregate Corp., Dimmick Ave. and Draper Road in East Falmouth.
Good evening. My name's John Doyle for the record.
Mr. Doyle, we just need to read it into the record before you can start.
Okay, go ahead.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Cape Cod Aggregates Corp., Barnstable, Mass., has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-150 through 240-156 and 240-212 of the Code of Falmouth to continue the earth-moving operation and reclamation of land on properties located on Dimmick Avenue and Draper Road, East Falmouth, Mass. MAP 22, Section 1, Parcel 8A, Lots 14. MAP 23, Section 3, Parcel 14A, Lots 13. MAP 23, Section 3, Parcel 14B, Lots 15. And MAP 23, Section 3, Parcel 14C, Lot 17. For referrals. No comment from Health. Assessors, no comment. Planning, no comment. There was a memo submitted to the file today from the Falmouth Conservation Commission from Marcus Speerzick, Conservation Land Manager, MES Technician, regarding off Blacksmith Shop Road, East Falmouth, Mass., Application Number 52-19. On 9/20/2016, a referral stated at the west end of Lot 13, MAP 23, 3, 14A, 13, has wetlands and that we would like to discuss future plans. We would like to recommend an onsite visit with conservation staff, the engineer, Mr. John Doyle and Mr. Paul LaRusso, to review proposed and future activities, and also to review the wildlife corridor and adjacent town property line locations. And there is one letter of concern and one letter of support.
Mr. Doyle?
Again, John Doyle, for the record. I'm just gonna go ahead with what we were gonna present to you and we'll have to deal with this referral. I feel, or we feel, kinda blindsided by this. It came today, I guess, and we're here, ready to go. So we did review this when we got the original permit and marked out all the deer trails and that was... And I guess we gotta take a walk again. But I think quite a few of you were out there at the site visit on the 24th, I believe it was, on a Saturday. Four of you I recognize were there. I don't know about others, but this is... We're applying to renew an earth-moving special permit, which is required every three years if you're earth-moving, because that's the way it's written in the zoning bylaw. I give you a quantity removed each year from the gravel pit. However, every three years, we actually have to renew the permit, which is only valid for three years. So this is a third year. The first year of this special permit was 1989, so it's 30 years we've been dealing with this pit. The pit is off Blacksmith Shop Road. It's hard to describe it being on a... Not on a road, but it's north of Falmouth High School, west of Blacksmith Shop, and abuts the back of the industrial park and the old landfill. The property that is under the special permit is about 60 acres. There's probably 25 of it. I haven't been asked that question in a long time, but around 25 of those acres are set aside for deer corridors, wetlands such as that. Required buffers under the bylaw, such as 50 feet along the perimeter, and the bulk of the land here set aside is out in where we discovered the whitetail deer crossings and the wetland. If you look at this... Can't carry this with me, but if you look at this map here, and this is generally the 60 acres we're keeping of, this dark green around it... The ribbon around the perimeter is required under the zoning bylaw. And then this is the area out here that we reserve for the wetland, which is out here in the line... This would be the eastilly line of the sewage plant out here. We're not anywhere near it yet, but I guess they wanna talk about when we get there. I don't know if I'll be here when we get there. But this gray haul road you can see comes from the plant out front on Thomas Land Resort. Comes over some town land, which the town's given the Seamen Board. Comes through a 19-acre piece of property that Cape Cod Aggregates also owns. That was mined for many years as well. I think that I staked that out. Uncle Paul LaRusso in the early 70s, and that's been mined and we access through there. The lighter green are areas that are under the special... These here since we proceeded from this end, there are these green lighter green areas that areas that were already mined and have been revegetated under the mitigation practices. And it looks pretty good. There's pretty thick growth in there and trees have filled in the well. Even over in here, where it doesn't get the lizment across sunlight is the other areas to get. These are areas that we have not gone to get this lighter green that are approved under the special permit. The way the permit lays it out is to do it in 60,000 square foot cells or thereabouts. This, the lighter, the tan areas we're currently working. And this area right here, the darker brown, is an area we just cleared about a year ago. But now we're taking the loam off and some of the boulders off the top. At least when I concluded my survey in this first half of August, it wasn't being mined yet. They might be digging into this bit now. That's the way it lays out. I think people that are out there will recognize, we came up into this area and stopped, got out, looked around the pit, and we stopped down low to look at heat mitigation of the slopes here. As I say, I'm here really at this point to answer any questions you might have, but this has been going on for the 30 years I've been dealing with it, and I'm, like I said, blindsided by this referral coming in today. We were hoping to get this done tonight, and there's people that are employed out there who would like to keep working. Sam LaRusso is here with me and his son, Paul, and we... Any of us would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. We'll see if the board has any questions. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Bob?
Now, just to confirm, there was one letter in the file that had concerns. It's a Loretta O'Brien. What's the distance of the buffer at her property?
Loretta was there at the origin in 89, and she has a house over here. She remain here, and she requested a heavier buffer. We went up 200 feet from her instead of the 50 years before. Her letter also states that she bought the house before this special permit was issued. But if you look at... I went back and looked at the notes from the original meeting in 1989, and that shows that it states from the board that this was an expansion from the operation that was in effect, the east of it, in the 19-acre parcel, which was in effect at least 20 years before she bought the property. Adjacent to that, there's another pit, the Lawrence Lynch, that was in operation for many, many years before she was here. She was saying also that she thought this thing was gonna only last 15 years, and there's... I looked through all the notes of those first three renewals and the original one, and there's no comment to that effect. And I think that when you go back every three years and you see that you've only gone through one cell, you can't expect that it's going to last 15 years. I mean, it's implicit that it's gonna be many, many years.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
No comment, no questions. Ken?
Nothing.
No questions. With regard to the Lawrence Lynch property, is that active?
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sorry, where on the map would...
Okay, so... If you come in through the 19-acre piece, if I can see it, there is Lawrence Lynch. If you draw by a moment up here, it's... So up here, they're grinding, they're... Down here, they're maybe redoing some pavement that's ground up to get it a hardener. There's about three different operations going in there, and many trucks going in. Relatively speaking, they're quiet.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Doyle at this time?
No questions.
Okay. Turning to the public, any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project tonight? Seeing none, back to the board.
So to give conservation time for their review, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to September 19th.
Mr. Doyle, are you available on the 19th?
I have surgery on the 18th. I thought I had this thing jammed in here just right, but we'll make sure somebody's here, I guess. Can you be here soon?
I hope so.
All right, so a motion was made to continue to September 19th by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, up next we have Application 48-19, McCaskill, 64 Philadelphia Street in T-Ticket.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass. General Laws, you are hereby notified that John H. and Lori A. McCaskill of Franklin, Mass., have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the town of the Code of Falmouth to construct an addition exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 64 Philadelphia Street, T-Ticket, Mass. For referrals, our property is on municipal sewer and four bedrooms would be allowed. Concom, no comment. Engineering, general comments recommending the board add condition that requires the stormwater measures for the roof area runoff. Assessors, it includes lots 56, 57, and 58. Water, no comment. Fire department, no comment. Planning, no comment.
For the applicants tonight?
Yes, good evening. My name is John McCaskill. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're here to discuss today expanding our home on 64 Philadelphia Street. What we're intending to do is add 16 by 32 addition to the current structure, on which we're gonna put two bedrooms and a bathroom. We did get the comment about adding a rain garden, which we're happy to do as part of the project. We've done extensive landscaping to the project, to the home since we've owned it. We've owned the current home since 2010, and it's getting to that point in our life where we're gonna be spending a lot more time here, so we need some more space.
Okay. Now we'll turn it to board questions if...
Sure.
Okay. James, any questions?
No questions.
Ken, anything? Do you want me to come back to you?
So usually when we consider these requests, we get some kind of analysis of adjacent.
So there is a... They did submit bulk calculations.
Okay.
The proposed structure would be 20.3%. For the rest of the area, there are nine properties between 13 and 19%. And there are six properties ranging from 23 to 36%.
Okay, great.
I have a copy of that if you'd like it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else for now, Ken?
That's it.
Ed?
No, no questions.
Bob?
No questions.
Mary?
I have questions.
Your property is currently sewed?
Yes, sir.
So you're allowed up to the four beds per...
Yes, we're allowed four, I believe was the comment from the gentleman from the Sewer Commission, and we're intending on having three.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at this time? Turning to members of the public, any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Any at all? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any additional questions?
I just have one comment. You oughta put the street number on the house.
We will do that. My mailbox fell off. So the mailbox went south, but yes, we will get that done.
Any additional questions? All right.
Move to close?
Move to close by Ken, second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And what would be the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Bob and second by Ken. Findings?
Property served by town sewer. Current property is a three-bedroom, remaining a three-bedroom.
More bedroom.
That's actually a three-bedroom, remaining a three, but they could have four.
I think, if I can say, we did go through that. It's actually a two-bedroom. Someone from the town came through and said that what we were calling a third bedroom really isn't a bedroom.
For the assessors.
Yeah, so assessors, so what that was is assessors doesn't consider a bedroom, but Health, I think, considers it, so you could still have four eventually, so...
That's fine.
So currently a three-bedroom, remaining a three-bedroom. Proposed structure would be 20.3% for lot coverage. Ridge height 16 feet. Bulk calculations were submitted. Property falls within mid-range. Owner said that they will add rain gardens for roof runoff.
Any other findings?
That's it.
All right. Conditions?
Per plans?
Should do dry wells and rain gardens or whatever they need for the engineering department.
All right. We'll do that standard language. We'll allow their engineer to properly determine where to... How many and where to place them?
Yes.
Yeah, and under, actually, we should add into findings, so it meets 240-3C, 240-69, and 240-216. Not substantially more detrimental and increases utilization.
Okay. Any other findings or conditions? Seeing none, that motion to approve was made by Bob and second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And just for the record, we'd like to thank the ladies. They've been great. We wouldn't have gotten this done without them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have Application 47-19, Cefoli and McClasky, 51 Weston Road in North Falmouth.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass. General Laws, you are hereby notified that Robert Cefoli and Nanette McClasky of North Falmouth, Mass., have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to remove existing deck and construct an addition in its place exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 51 Weston Road, North Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Scott McGann of Health gave an original comment that he had questions regarding the septic, but he updated that as of 9/319. He reviewed the revised plans and was okay with the septic system. Engineering, general comments, not to direct storm runoff to the property of butters or rights of ways, and that we should add additional dry wells, rain gardens, or stormwater measures for roof runoff. Assessors, no comment. Water, no comment. Fire department, no comment. There were... There's four letters of support. And there were bulk calculations submitted. Currently, the... It showed the current property at 11.9%, the proposed at 22.7%. And at 22.7%, it is in the upper scale for the surrounding properties. And I will pass this down to Ken.
Always an interest. And for the applicant tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Terry. I'm an attorney at Amen &amp; Clower at 39 Town Hall Square. I represent Nanette McClasky and Robert Cefoli, the owners of 51 Weston Road, Falmouth, and the applicant in this matter. The property is located on the western end of Weston Road in West Falmouth, northeast of New Silver Beach. The property is on a lot of 9,626 square feet and is located in the residential C zoning district. The dwelling in the lot is a two-bedroom home constructed in 1963 with a footprint of approximately 1,148 square feet. The dwelling itself is conforming as to side and rear yard setbacks, as well as to lot coverage by structure and lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. The dwelling is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the front setback, which measures 22.6 feet to the front steps, just under the 25-foot setback. In improving the property, the applicant has made the determination to add a small addition to their modestly sized dwelling, which will include a new master bedroom with walk-in closet and bathroom. Applicant will be installing a new septic system as shown on the submitted plan to serve three bedrooms. Applicant will be demolishing an existing deck and constructing a new deck off the master bedroom. This bedroom and deck addition with a combined footprint of approximately 480 square feet will result in lot coverage by structures of 22.7%. As such, the applicants are seeking a special permit under zoning bylaw 240-69.E., which states that lot coverage by structures of up to 25% may be allowed by special permit by the Board of Appeals. The bylaw goes on to state that the board should consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. As Member McGann mentioned, I prepared and submitted a spreadsheet of the size of structures of properties in the neighborhood and note that of the surrounding properties, seven have larger footprints than the applicant's proposed structure. 21 out of 26 have a higher gross building area, and 11 are multi-story, where the applicant's home is and will remain, a single story. So the building as proposed is well within the nature and character of the surrounding neighborhood. There's no effect of shadow on adjacent properties. There's no impact of views and vistas from public ways. This portion of Weston Street is a private way, and there will be no effect of nitrogen on the coastal embayments. Given all of this, the dwelling and lot, both as existing and proposed, certainly fall within an appropriate range in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood. The applicant's proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists. The project will not cause any adverse effects. There will be no new non-conformity, and the existing front setback non-conformity will not be exacerbated. No public view or vista will be impaired, and the project meets the standards of Section 240-216. The project therefore meets the criteria of Section 240-69E, and we ask that you grant the special permit. I'll note that as was mentioned, the applicant has received four letters of support from neighbors and abutters that were submitted to the board, and at this point, I'd be glad to address any questions that the board may have regarding this project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Bob?
Is there a basement under the main structure?
There is, yes.
And it's a full basement?
It is a full basement. The addition is going to be on a concrete slab.
That's all I have.
Ed, was there a question on the elevation of the septic thing? Was that resolved?
It was to the health agent's satisfaction. There was some back and forth with the project engineer, and Mr. McGann confirmed that per the state Title V code, that the setback from a slab is 10 feet regardless of the relative elevation of the leaching field.
As it was addressed.
Yep.
Ken, anything?
Can you tell us a little about what the shed is used for?
I'm not aware of what the purpose of the shed is.
I'm just wondering, you know, one way to continue to conform is when you're expanding your home is to...
Yeah, I think they use it for storage and for gardening supplies and the like.
So is the basement accessible via bulkhead, or how do people get into the basement?
There's internal access.
Internal only. Okay.
Anything else? James?
No questions.
Any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project tonight? Anyone at all? Seeing none, back to the board. The board like to proceed.
You know, I'm inclined to support it. Channeling Kim a little on the shed, but...
Answer question.
Yeah, so the thing with the shed is...
And I noticed Bob's question.
Is he said that he only had an interior access, but on the bulk calculations, isn't it... I'm mostly running at like a... Low? What's the...
So the issue with lot coverage here is that it's a small lot, right? It's a 10,000-square-foot lot. There's quite a few homes that are larger, but they're on larger lots. But on the plus side, they're staying at one story, which...
There's no garage for storage and lawnmowers and stuff.
Right, so I...
If there was exterior access to the basement, I'd probably try to get rid of the shed, but interior access is awkward.
Yeah, so that was a good point. And plus, the fact that they really... You know, they could go up, but they didn't.
I noted that of the 25 that were listed, the properties, there was only one lot that was over 20%.
Right.
And that was the 95 Glen Avenue.
And that's another one that's 9,000-square-foot lot. So these small lots have trouble, you know...
Well, I also noted that next in line was 87 at 16.8, and the next one, out of the 25, was this one. It is, as it currently exists, at 14.6.
Yeah. No, so that's why, you know, consider removing the shed, which would get you a hundred or so square feet, it looks like, maybe. Maybe not even. No, yeah, maybe 150 square feet. But it is a... Kind of a modest addition, really.
Yeah, it is. I'd be inclined to keep the shed. I don't know if anyone else...
Well, I thought the point about the access.
The access is on interior, so...
Oh, it's a fair point, absolutely. Any other issues? Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to close, perhaps?
Move to close.
Move to close. Okay, by Ken, second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And how would we like to proceed?
Supposed motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Bob and second by Ed. Findings?
Um, these 240-3C, 240-69E, they will be removing the existing deck to construct the addition. They're increasing the lot coverage from 11.9 to 22.7. They're increasing the bedroom from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, but are installing an updated septic system. There's no new non-conformities, but the front yard setback of 22.6 to the front step is remaining the same. I think we should note that Health Department was okay with the revised plans as of 9-3. And although that we did review for, uh, lot coverage, even though they do have a basement, it only has interior access with limits exterior storage.
I think it's worth also noting that they're maintaining the...
Single story?
The height, uh, let's see, so they're, they're going up a little, right? 19 feet, I guess, compared to existing 15, but not the two full stories, or one and a half stories.
Okay, any other findings?
Uh, meets 240, do we do, uh, meets 240-216?
No, I don't think so.
Meets 240-216. Enhances the use of, of the property, and it's a, it's a modest, uh, home size compared to town.
And they're improving the septic, too. Some other finding, maybe, did, if, can we make that already?
Uh, I think we did. Updated septic and, and the health's okay with the 9-3 plans. Uh, conditions?
Uh, per plans.
Okay, any other conditions?
Engineering comments regarding storm runoff, adding either rain gardens or drywells. Uh, that the septic is the revised septic that was submitted to the Health Department.
Okay, anything else? Yes, that was a motion approved made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have application 42-19, Hawks Warama. Not sure I'll be corrected on that. Uh, 641 West Falmouth Highway in West Falmouth.
Okay, application number 42-19, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you hereby notify that Arthur M. Hawks and Sarah L. Warama of West Falmouth, Mass, has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-51A 5 of the Code of Falmouth to construct a single-family dwelling and maintain existing two-family dwelling on subject property known as 641 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Uh, engineering has a long list of comments. Pages of comments. Historical commission, uh, this is located outside of the West Falmouth Historic District, setback of 150 feet from the road edge. The applicant engineer should place the district setback of 150 feet on plans when a parcel is in a local historic district. Historic commission review, um, is not necessary. Uh, health, uh, septic system installation permit was issued on 5/30/2019 for the project. Uh, water, each occupied structure must have its own water service. Applicant needs to come to 416 Gifford and apply for services for the new structure. Planning, no comment. Assessors, no comment. Uh, there was something updated from health. They had revised, uh, they had repositioned the septic system going to the Health Department, and I don't know if that has been reflected on the plans that we have in the file. And then there is a memo that was received today, um, from Marcus Spears, a conservation land manager, MES technician. Uh, the staked edge of the wetland is shown on the plan dated 5/4/2019 by Jay Doyle and Associates. Is the isolated land subject to flooding, ILSF freshwater wetland line, that staff confirmed in May of 2017. The wetland could possibly be a vernal pool unless confirmed otherwise. The 100-foot vernal pool habitat line would be labeled from the determined high-water mark of the wetland, which would be further away than the 100-foot ILSF line. The proposed dwelling is proposed outside of conservation jurisdiction. However, the foundation overdig will likely extend within jurisdiction. A properly installed limit of work silt fence must be incorporated prior to digging. The silt fence can extend within the 100-foot wetland line provided it is, it is within existing grass and no trees or shrubs or vegetation are removed. All other proposed work within conservation jurisdiction, that includes the proposed pool, retaining wall, new shed site, and any other structures, hardscape or additional digging activity must first be approved by con, by the commission. Any naturally vegetated resource area, buffer areas, and existing trees for the project must be included on the plan, along with the vernal pool line and buffer zone setback distances prior to filing. Compensatory native plantings are required under FWR 10.9, 10.18 for structures, hardscape or tree removal. Um, and we will need to confirm regarding the pool because there is a request for a pool, it is shown on the plan, but in the description of the project, uh, it didn't, discuss the pool.
For the applicant tonight?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clow. I'm an attorney with Amen &amp; Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Arthur M. Hawks and Sarah Warama. They're the owners of the property at 641 West Falmouth Highway, and they're seeking a special permit tonight under Sections 240-3C and Sections 240-51A 5, to allow for the construction of a new dwelling on the site. This property is located in the heart of West Falmouth, frontage on both 28A and Stagecoach Way. It's on a lot of, just shy of an acre, it's 39,257 square feet, and it's a split-zone lot, containing public use, business 3, and residential B zoning districts. The breakdown of those districts, uh, is approximately 4,200 square feet in the public use, 14,300 in the business 3, and 20,600 in the residential B. It's presently non, it presently contains a non-conforming two-story, two-family dwelling at the front of the lot, as well as two sheds and a garage. The non-conformity is the existing front yard setback, which is 14 feet where 25 is required, and the side yard setback to the garage, which is 5 feet where 10 feet is required. The applicants live on the first floor of the duplex. Uh, Mr. Hawks, his family has been in Falmouth since 1778, he's the seventh generation, and Ms. Warama owns and operates the Village Cafe directly across the street. They're proposing to remove the existing garage and, and one of the sheds, and to construct a single-family residence at the rear of the lot with an attached garage and pool. You'll note on the plan that the plan does refer to a proposed pool. The idea is that the, the construction will be phased on this. Um, so at any point they were to go and seek permission for the pool, um, they would, of course, have to go to conservation, but rather than having to resubmit to the zoning board, they want to permit what they're looking to do over the next few years. This proposed house will be their new home, and it will allow for the preservation and maintenance of the historic existing two-family structure, which will remain at the front of the site. This will result in three residential units on the site, which constitutes multifamily. As it is split-zoned, uh, Section 240-51A 5 allows for multifamily use in a business zone where the density is less than six units per acre, where the public good is served, and where the business zone will not be adversely affected in the uses in the zone and not noxious to multifamily uses. The existing two-family dwelling will remain exactly where it is in the public use in business 3 district. The third unit, which is a single-family dwelling, will be located entirely within the residential B structure, uh, residential B zoning district. The proposed structure will conform to front, rear, and side yard setbacks. The property as a whole will conform to lot coverage by structure of 10.5 percent, and lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking at 27.5 percent. And, uh, the non-conforming setback to the garage will be eliminated. The only remaining non-conformity will be the front yard setback to the two-family dwelling, which is unaffected by this proposal. Public good is served by the addition of a rental unit to an area which is in desperate need of those. The business zone is not adversely affected, as it's the same use as at present, and the uses in the zone are not noxious to multifamily housing. I do understand that there were some questions regarding split-zone lots. Uh, the courts have held consistently that you can use the entire lot for calculating dimensional compliance and density. They've also held that various uses on a lot do not require cumulative, cumulative calculation of area requirements, as that would end up rendering an absurd or unreasonable result. There's been development of a similar nature and approval by this board on a number of occasions. The most analogous case is, uh, just a few hundred feet up the street. It was, uh, appeal number 7201, which allowed for the construction of the Fieldstone Place condominiums on the corner of West Moreland, 28A. The zoning board approved six units on 1.2 acres, in which the board calculated the permitted density based on the entire lot, which consisted of public use, business 3, and residential B. And it allowed one of those units, which was a single-family dwelling, to be located on a residential B portion of that lot. Appeal number 13805, which was, uh, brought by the Good Builders at 270 Old Main, uh, Old Main Road in North Falmouth, the ZBA allowed multifamily use of eight units on 1.558 acres, and allowed for, uh, three existing duplexes within the business district and one new duplex in the general residence portion of the lot. The board has made similar findings for the Red Barn condominiums, the West Falmouth, uh, Westwind condominiums, both on West Falmouth Highway, and the development of 587 Main Street, in which two existing single-family dwellings were maintained. We're proposing the existing duplex remain in addition of, of a third unit, which will be a single-family house located entirely within a residential B district. It's a modest project, based on the lot size, they could be seeking up to five units. We've addressed the engineering comments, uh, and I think the follow-up comment they submitted noted that those comments were all, uh, addressed. And we're aware of the conservation comment that came in, and will, of course, deal with that accordingly. This development is not significant, significantly more detrimental than what currently exists. There's no new non-conformities that will result from this project, and an existing non-conformity will be eliminated. This project meets the standards of 240-3C, 240-51A 5, and 240-216. For these reasons, and given these considerations, I'd ask that the board grant the special permit, and I'd, of course, be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Start off with James, do you have any questions?
The existing shed closest to, uh, Stagecoach Lane, it's going to be relocated, whereabouts...
It's actually just going to be, um, that one's being removed.
Just removed?
Yeah.
And access to the future garage is going to come in off of West Falmouth Highway?
Correct. Off the, off the existing, off of the existing driveway, curb cut.
Thank you.
Ken?
So, how many bedrooms is this proposed home?
Three.
Okay, so what you've included in here is the multifamily, uh, floor plan.
Yeah, that was, there was an existing floor plan, and then there's a proposed, there are the proposed floor plans which were submitted, um, and...
Not sure I'm finding a proposed...
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
For Ken?
Ted? No comments, I think it's a nice project.
Bob, anything?
So, do you have a landscape plan?
We did submit, um...
Cause I didn't see anything in the file.
There was, uh, information regarding retaining walls submitted, but I don't believe there was an actual landscaping plan that was submitted.
Um, on the, on the house that currently exists...
Mm-hmm.
Where is that septic system? If that ever has to be upgraded, do you have a reserve area?
Well, there is. It's under the driveway. There's more than enough space on the lot to provide for reserve area.
And then, so there, and there was a mention, um, from Mallory, the Health Department, that it almost sounded like the, the new septic for the proposed was being relocated?
It's being altered slightly because of one of the engineering comments referred to a low spot.
So is that being moved forward?
I believe the system's remaining exactly where it is.
Yeah, they, uh, the beach field area that they, uh, lawn area was pended right at the end of the beach field, and we're, uh, it's either the beach field area that deserves where the lawn was, right at the end of the, uh, it doesn't change any of our offsets or anything, it's just going to shift it down. It's not going to change any of our, uh, offsets off the back wall, on the side of the house.
Is that affected at all by that 100-foot distance?
No, we've got 126-foot.
And then on the, um, I noticed on the plan, so you have a future garage that you may put on, and it showed a bonus room. What's the bonus room?
Den. I mean, it's, it's, it's intended as, as recreational space.
Would that meet definition of a bedroom? Because if it does, you're going to need a bigger septic system.
It's a, it's a five-bedroom septic. It's actually a five-bedroom septic that's been, been proposed.
And the, um, the pool location on the plan, so that's just something that you may or may not put in at some point?
Yeah, they'd rather come and have it approve what their ultimate vision is, because once they've relied on a permit, it becomes good.
There's a, there's a, so there's a row of trees to the back of the lot, it looks like maybe cedars that somebody put in as a buffer from the house behind it. Are all those remaining, or any of those have to be removed?
Those are remaining.
Right, that's all I have.
They're a family of landscapers, it's going to be a...
Can that be a finding?
Sure.
Mary, anything?
Yeah, I, I do have something. And the discussion was kind of quick, so I'm, I'm not sure if you've covered this or not, but under, um, 240-67 with the minimum lot dimensions, um, I noticed, at least my reading of this, is that it's a business 3, which goes to a note, um, which requires the nearest single residence, general residence, or agricultural district, whichever is closest. And that goes to the front of the, the chart, which looks like single residence, which is minimum lot area of 40,000.
It's an existing lot, we're not creating a new lot. But I'm also not entirely sure I follow, because I'm looking at 240-67, and footnote I see under business 3, okay, requirements of those nearest single residence, general residence, whichever is closest. It's, it's a pre-existing lot that's been in this shape, we're not creating a new lot. The minimum lot size requirements apply when you're creating a new lot.
But aren't you doing something where you're, you have three different zones, and then you're, you're, um, you're using the best of those three zones to come in?
We have, we have the square footage required for, you're to be allowed to have a single-family dwelling here, you're allowed to seek a special permit for the multifamily use, which would require 7,260 square feet per each unit. That's 43,560 divided by six.
But only for, for combining?
But it's already, it's, it, the, each separate zone doesn't create a separate lot, it's one lot, it's one parcel of land, it's just split with the zoning districts. You're not required to have the minimum lot size in each zoning district. And the courts have held that you're not required to have the required size for multiple uses, and the finding they had was that it would result in, uh, the exact language was, would render an absurd...
render an absurd or unreasonable result under the zoning bylaw.
Anything else there?
Just for clarification, so you said that they were moving the shed, but on the plan it says it's being relocated.
Yeah, it's, it's going away. It's going away.
So they're not going to relocate to that other site that says it's being relocated?
There is an existing shed here.
And then up to the, see up to the back, it says new site for shed?
I think that they were considering it, I don't think they're married to it.
Okay.
I mean, I think we have more than enough lot coverage that if they wanted to keep it, they could, but...
And on the proposed pool, I know they haven't planned anything yet, but it appears by the plan that that is within that hundred-foot zone, is it?
Of course, and that would, that would require, that would require Conservation Commission approval. And Conservation does allow pools within that hundred-foot setback.
No, I just don't know, Norine, do we have something in the file that says it is a five-bedroom system from Health?
I think the plan.
I don't know the answer to that.
Just says proposed S.
Oh, I'm sorry, it, it is four-bedroom. If you look at the plans, the second page of the site plan, it refers to a four-bedroom system. So it's a three-bedroom house and even with the bonus room, it's a four-bedroom.
Attorney Clawor, you did reference case law, do you actually have a site or a case law?
I do, there's, there's two various cases, I only have a printed copy of one of them. I'd be happy to submit the one I have to the board and I can get the second case to the board if they'd like, but the cases are Tofias v Butler, which is 26 Mass. Appeals Court, eighty-nine, and Green v Board of Appeals of Norwood, which is 358 Mass., 253.
Thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Clawor at this time? Any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? I know there's not too many of you out there, but I have to ask anyway. All right. Seeing none?
That says anything is fired.
What's that? Seeing none, back to the board. Like they have some discussion or...
Yeah, so just because the conservation comment just came in tonight and just do we have time to just review the case law, I'd be inclined to continue to the nineteenth.
Okay. Does everyone feel?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to review the case law. We've had a couple cases like this. I do remember, I can't remember which, which of those two you cited, but...
There's four, there's four in the panel, there was the Rogers property at, at the Red Barn condos, there was Westwind, there was, but you know, I, I think, you know, as to the conservation comment, the conservation comment basically says if we need approval from conservation, we need to submit to conservation, which we of course do. The project, the, the house itself doesn't require conservation approval and getting a, getting a building permit will require conservation. So we'll of course respond to that and, and deal with that accordingly. Regarding the case law, you know, I think it's, it's case law this board has seen before. Of course, if, if, if that's the choice between...
But doesn't mean everybody on the board has seen it.
Oh, I understand. I'm happy to submit it, of course. It's relatively straightforward as far as these things go.
Anyone else like to chime in? I think just for, like Ken said, for the benefit of everyone, if you could submit that case law...
Happy to.
...we could review, that'd be to our benefit. Anything else? All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
So I would like to make a motion to continue to September nineteenth.
Second. Okay, motion was made by Bob to continue to September nineteenth, second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and up next we have Application 49-19, Messer Bennett, 190 Galetta Drive in East Falmouth.
I did speak with Ms. Stockman today. We are, we have to resubmit to planning. Rather than continuing this to an unknown date, I'm going to submit a request that we withdraw without prejudice and we'll be resubmitting immediately after submitting back to the planning board. So I have a request that I'd be happy to submit.
Okay.
Motion to accept their...
Withdraw without prejudice.
Motion to withdraw, or request to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Ken and I'll give the second to Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to our open meeting items, the minutes for August 22nd, we're going to table that for our next meeting. We have Application 29-19, Swain, 26 Vibralane in East Falmouth discussing the draft decision with possible vote. Has everyone had a chance to review it?
I've got it today.
Yep. Just pulling it up on my phone.
Me too.
Didn't look at it earlier and just...
I don't know, rubber bands just seem to disappear and it's under the table, I don't know what happens.
And do we want to have any discussion about it at all or...
I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'm good with it.
Draft was good?
Yep.
So I guess the issue was the number of building, a number of, one issue, number of bedrooms.
So I did have a conversation with the Building Commissioner today. He did verify the point that Mr. Swain made which was that the existing house is only two bedrooms and that that access to the above area is eliminated.
Okay.
So they will have a total of three bedrooms on the property.
All right, so I'll take care of that. Ken, did you have any other concerns or...
No, I'm just quickly going over this.
No, but could we, could we add that to the findings since the Building Commissioner is the one that's responding?
All right.
I think Mary has a question.
Mary?
Just a clarification, it sounded like it's already in there, but on the accessory unit, there is, there are two addresses, one's in the front and one's in the back. That's a question.
I don't know about addresses.
I'm sorry, doors.
No, doors, so in the last plan, they, they didn't show one of the doors.
Oh, doors, they did, they did verify that there were two doors.
Two, they did.
He said one to the front and one to the rear.
Okay, because I, I don't remember seeing it on the plan.
Okay, I will double check, but he did confirm that.
Yep.
All right, so it looks like we're leaning toward approving with the condition regarding...
Yeah, so with just the additions, the findings from the Building Commissioner and also just making sure that on the revised plan, they show both doors on the back unit.
Okay.
What is that? Can you remind me of the process for asserting that one of the units is owner occupied for seven months? How do they, how do they do that?
Well, the bylaw requires an affidavit be submitted to the Building Commissioner annually to certify to that.
That's in the, that's in the decision.
Yes.
It's in the decision, I just wasn't, well, it's in the decision that one of the units must be occupied for that period. I don't think it says that they have to submit an affidavit, I don't think.
I thought it did.
Yeah, it's in there. Yeah, it's part of the, so it's part of the actual bylaw, so they...
Part of the bylaw.
No, but it's actually in the decision.
I think the language hopefully got picked up within the decision as well.
Yeah, I think it did.
It did.
Okay, I just might have skipped over that.
What we might want to check in the future, not specifically to this, but we've approved a lot of these accessory apartments now, so we may want to check after a full year, has anything ever been submitted to the Building Department?
To the Building Commissioner.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
And what will they do if that's not all approved?
Well, if, at least we could report if they've actually been submitted.
Oh, there it is, eight.
Suppose they could ask that it be submitted or required.
Oh, I gave you the wrong number, sorry.
Because better to catch that now at the first...
Okay, so I saw seven, but not eight. But, okay.
Yes, it is nothing.
All right. So you're all second?
Mm-hmm.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Right, so a motion to approve as drafted with the discussed changes.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, up next we have a request for board administrative approval, Application 51-19, Midary, Four Nichols Road in Wacoit, it's to construct a concrete deck. And Norine, do you, do you have anything on this?
So they have... Reconstruct.
I'm sorry, reconstruct.
Yeah, so they have, they have an existing concrete patio slash deck, but they actually want to reduce in size.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds pretty good to us.
Sounds good.
So that will be a reduction.
Why did they have to come before?
All right, so what do we need, a motion to approve?
Think we do.
I will be happy to make that motion.
All right. Motion approved was made by Ken and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do they really have to come before us?
It was administrative.
Yeah. All right, and number four, we already took care of, we took that out of order. Future workshop is October nineteenth, nine AM.
What's on the agenda?
Lunch.
Let's, let's think of that and forward our ideas to Norine.
I think there may be some tweaks perhaps to zoning board rules and then whatever miscellaneous other items that you folks want to discuss.
So I would echo the concerns that we have heard tonight and that I, we've discussed previously about enforcement being an issue.
I understand there was an offer made to a potential future employee who would be doing enforcement, so fingers crossed you'll hopefully have someone new soon.
Right.
Yeah, and I would also like...
But I think it's a bigger issue and I just was wondering if maybe while we're having this workshop, we might discuss, because one possibility would be to...
Outside council.
Draft some kind of letter to the selectmen or, I, I don't know, brainstorm about how we could, you know, raise the visibility of the issue because it's, it's, it is a significant issue that goes beyond any one case.
And I don't know, I don't know if, I don't know if Town Council would do it or who we would, but, but I would like to know the process if we need to enforce as a board. What are the steps getting outside council, what's the process?
For the accessory apartment?
No, for decision, past decisions that have not been enforced or have been changed in case they're not enforced by the Building Department.
Right.
Because where we, where we're the only ones that see the appeals of the Building Department, it's my understanding that if we decide to try to enforce, we need outside council because we can't hear the appeal of the Building Department since we're the ones bringing the complaint.
Sounds like a good question for Town Council.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I think it's a large and significant issue and probably should be thinking harder about how to...
Who's the attorney that we've had in the past? Mark...
Boboski.
It would be worth, we're going to have him available to come and speak.
Or I don't even know if Kim...
Try to reach out to him?
Yeah, it would, you know, we're lucky to pay, but I think it'd be money well spent.
It's a little late in the year, maybe he'd come down and put his boat in the water.
Yeah.
Well, Kim seemed to have a pretty hands-on thing too, so she, you never know, she might want to, she may grant us with an appearance to...
Oh, have her come as a, as a consultant.
As an outside consultant.
Well, that's an interesting idea.
I mean, when we used to have issues with stuff, she seemed to know what the process was.
An interesting idea.
I'd also like to, as, as a little thing, is, I, I would like to hear something from a landscape architect on, on all these landscape plans that we see, they shove all these plantings in a two-foot space, I, I just don't think they're viable. So I'd like to just get some basics on buffer plantings and yeah, so that would be, that would be nice to have.
There we go, we got a certified...
I was going to say, we, we may have a consultant who might swing by and raise you with appearance.
Yeah.
If there's some questions.
And we usually have snacks.
And just as a, so a general board thing, so again, because of these accessory apartments, and I know I can't ask about, they're supposed to turn in an affidavit, I don't know what's been approved so far, if anything has actually met the one-year term.
You know, it may be something that would be essentially a form letter that would be mailed to all accessory apartments once a year to the owners.
Well, the thing is, it's controlled by the Building Department, so what I'd like to know is when stuff hits the one-year period...
Who's going to check to see?
Can the Building Department supply us with the affidavits that have been submitted each year?
Well, I think the question is if they don't receive an affidavit.
I, so I'll go on the assumption that they are receiving it? I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, the doubt that they're doing the, what the bylaw calls for, I just want to know if they've been received.
Well, though, I think the problem is, is that it appears to be that the owners are directed to provide the Building Department with the affidavit, not that the Building Department is to request it.
Right.
So I think the question is...
If it's not received in the one-year term, what are the steps the Building Department is taking to either get the affidavit or enforce?
Right.
Even money that they haven't gotten any.
Yeah.
And I, I would also mention that even if they have an affidavit, it's an affidavit, it's just paper, so that's not enforcing anything.
No, no, but if they don't have it, those special permits are not valid. They wouldn't be able to continue the rentals.
I mean, I suppose that you could condition your decision and state that for the future, you're not going to be able to go back, but for your future accessory apartments, that you could make that a requirement of the special permit in that if they don't comply, they're subject to loss of...
So we just need...
Make it explicit.
So we just need to know if they have or not, the only way we're going to find out is if it's supplied by the Building Department.
And is that enforceable or does that require a change to the bylaw to add that to the bylaw?
Well, so as many special permit you grant, you can include conditions.
Right.
So absent the bylaw specifying that somebody's to provide an affidavit, you can take that one step further and say you'll be subject to loss of the unit and you'd have to reapply or whatever you want to be.
Yeah, I think Norine has an excellent idea. It's, it's, it's not enough, condition eight as it was written in this one we just...
It's not enough.
Is almost enough, but not quite, you got to make it explicit.
And I, I think the only problem following that through though is that if someone doesn't supply the affidavit and they lose the special permit, how are you going to enforce that?
Well, it's all part of the big enforcement ques, the big question.
Right, which is something more than paper.
Yeah, it, it is, but you know, it requires both person power and then, you know, some probably legal procedure.
Right, you could fine or whatever.
Right.
So is somebody going to contact Mark Boboski or Kimberly or...
Well, Norine can reach out, we've got...
You don't, Mark?
I do not. But I'm glad to reach out if you would like to...
I can help Norine.
Have some Q and A time.
Yeah, you don't.
Yep, Norine, I'll help you with that.
Okay.
All right, board discussion regarding zoning recodification committee. Board discussion regarding zoning recodification committee.
It's ongoing.
Ongoing.
He said with enthusiasm.
Yep. It's going to be ongoing, my guess is, for a very long time.
Forever. Any future agenda items? All right, seeing none. Our next meeting is September 19th, 6:30 here at Town Hall. Meeting is adjourned.